Because I've got some real laws right here. It's not Stooges, it's not Stooges' law.
Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, March 21st. Town council meeting in the town council chambers. 1170 Main Street is now 7:16 PM.
Councilman Luthbadi?
Here.
Councilman Messia?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Yeah.
Council President Goslin?
Yeah.
There is a quorum on record. CCAP Kent County Youth Center presentation.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Womley. I work for Comprehensive Community Action. And we recently, we recently have relocated our youth center that's been at the Buttonwoods area of Warwick for about nine years now. We're actually relocating to the West Warwick community. So we're really excited about that. The overriding goal of the youth center is to prepare youth ages 14 to 24 for employment. And we do that in a variety of ways. We do that by supporting their traditional education. We provide free prom dresses and tuxes for kids going to prom. We provide free tutoring for students who qualify. We also provide work placement for students that are enrolled in high school. So, I just wanted to introduce myself and my agency and my youth center. And I really do look forward to building a strong relationship within the community. One of the reasons that we did move was that we weren't seeing the children and the youth in the community that we serve of higher need. And we know they're there, but they weren't getting to us in Warwick. It just wasn't convenient. So our new location is at 289 Colesit Ave in the Colesit Plaza. Hopefully that'll work out well. It's on the bus route. It seems like everywhere I've been, which I've been a lot of places lately in West Warwick and Coventry, people seem to be aware of that area and that plaza specifically. We do have van transportation as we also offer some alternative education programming for students who have dropped out of high school. Again, with the ultimate goal of them becoming gainfully employed. So I do have, I didn't know what the protocol was. Haven't been to a town council yet, shame on me.
Do you have any of the flyers or anything that we can?
I do. I have a set for everyone here and then I have some for whoever else may be interested. So these are kind of divided up.
If you don't mind, you can actually give one to Kendra right behind you, the Kent County news reporter.
Oh, actually, then I would need one if you'd stand with me.
Indian giver.
Oh, I had exactly enough though.
No, don't worry. I have yours as an email. I have yours.
Yeah, I know. You sent, you sent mine too.
You sent it over to an email, so.
So the flyers that are included there are about our new location.
Yeah, you're gonna have this one too, Paula.
But also the prom dress and tux giveaway. We already had one event, but we'll be having another one on April 8th, which is a sad day. I think I have a flyer in there for summer employment, which is a big, big thing for kids. Specifically, the younger kids tend to call in groups for that because they're not yet employable legally. But through summer employment, they can work. That's how Jason and I are familiar with each other. Thank you, Jason, for even giving me the idea to come to the town council. I appreciate that. Because in the past, we have done some work in other towns with providing cleanup crews, cemetery maintenance, litter pickups, things like that. Through our work experience program, we actually could potentially fund that year round in town with small group. We receive monies that's filtered through the feds and through the state so that we can provide students outside of summer employment up to 240 hours of that work experience. We pay, CCAP pays all their salary, their hourly rate. We cover insurance, liability, all that stuff. Employer is just responsible for supervising and providing a schedule and time sheet.
Is this the same program that Dina Pecky shared with us last year?
Yes.
I thought it sounded very familiar.
It is.
Yeah, they paid.
But wait, we're brand new. We're one.
That's right. We welcome you.
And it's, this is an excellent program. I've worked with CCAP for three, about three years now. And we've, if we're looking for beautification projects, the first thing I thought was the work that the J.C.'s do. They could piggyback and work alongside the J.C.'s and gain their knowledge. And you think, I don't know, four or five kids, 16 hours a week, five kids, that's 80 man-hours a week for summer employment's five weeks. And it could be all West Warwick kids.
Let me just ask, is this, is this West Warwick children though, this program, or it's all of Kent County?
It's got Kent County.
That program, so the Kent County Youth Center, the way that our funding stream works is that we actually are open to any Rhode Island resident outside of Providence and Cranston. However, it seems to be in the areas like, you know, Warwick, West Warwick, Coventry, as opposed to Providence, particularly, the public transit system is a lot more user-friendly, for lack of a better term. It's wherever we're located is where the bulk of our clientele are coming from. And this year, obviously, you know, we're new to the area. We'll definitely be giving preference to both West Warwick and Coventry residents to get involved in the community and get the word out and, you know, become a part of the community, a member of, giving back, member of the community.
How do students get involved in this?
So the way that students get involved is they can either just drop in, or they can call us. I would suggest that people who are interested in summer employment, the best time to do that is by May. That's a big one. Lots and lots of kids come out for that. We generally, in years past, have been funded for 80 slots. Generally, it's 50, 14 and 15-year-olds, and then the rest go to 16 to 18-year-olds. However, the state kind of redid things this year, so we're not sure yet. The RFP came out. We submitted our proposal. We're waiting to hear back. And for the specifics of how they're gonna request that be structured. Normally, when we have 80 slots, we generally turn, end up turning away somewhere between 20 to 30 students, honestly, because there isn't, there is a need. But the beauty of this is too, if they qualify for the work experience program, we can, we can use that program. So even if we do have some students who wouldn't normally get into summer employment because they came in last or whatever, you know, I mean, the waiting list filled up. We can kind of go through those students and look at their eligibility requirements and put some into work experience, which mirrors, it can mirror summer employment and some into summer employment. So our ability to kind of meet their need is there. So we're just hoping we're able to do that.
So between the 14 and 16-year-olds, what type of jobs would they be given in the summer?
They're, so that's one of the points of contention with the state this year. The state was pushing for us to get them positions in, in areas of, I can't remember the terminology, but those, those career pathways that the state has deemed as viable. Some of those are not feasible for younger people, like the bio-med field. Or, you know, there's some that they're just not old enough to do. So we have tried to incorporate some of those things. We will be actually running for some of the younger kids a, what they're calling, what the state is calling, a work experience-based project. But we're actually going to be transporting kids from throughout, we have four different youth centers throughout the state. We're just one of them. So we're gonna be transporting some kids from each site to our Providence location where we actually are currently running the furniture bank there. And we're gonna work on, I believe it's gonna be, we have a furniture rehab project so kids can learn some skills. It's not employment at an employer for that part. But they'll still get paid. They'll be learning, like, on-the-job skills.
How about, how about a summer camp council, like councils and training?
So that has always been the largest group for us, for the various summer camps, including boys and girls, Coventry Parks and Rec. We've always done that. It's really up to whether or not the state is going to permit that this year. We've pushed for it. But they've asked us to stay away from nonprofit and concern training programming. I think we'll get some out of it. I think we'll get some out of it. I hope.
Just wondering.
But otherwise, students can find jobs or can ask to find jobs in areas of interest. Really ultimately, we want to expose them to a career pathway that they have an interest in. Either they'll realize it is the career pathway for them, or they may realize it's not, without risking, you know, burning a bridge with a potential employer.
One of the things that worked well for me when I worked with Sarah before is to use the environmental group of a cleanup crew. And I hate to say it, but I think West Warwick needs it. And I think we can all agree. I mean, you go through, it could be anywhere. Doesn't matter which ward. For the amount of time they have, five weeks in the summertime, three or four days a week, you can generate a lot of, a lot of trash pickup, recycling pickup.
Particularly on the bike path. We've been talking to ways to keep the, the up, the path during the summer.
Right. And it, but it's everywhere though.
No, I just saw one in particular.
And it'd be coordinating with, with probably DPW, you know, just kind of like an Earth Day cleanup, but just almost every day.
But you get six weeks out.
Yeah.
What, how did we hire last year, David, for the, for the bike path? We did hire kids, mostly teens, right?
Well, we've used the program through, I know Dina, and she, she usually set it up. She used to call Dave Lombari, Ray Beatty.
Yeah, we've used them every year.
Was that?
We've used them every year.
Yeah, so.
When we've had them and.
Dina brought it to us like four years ago.
So it's similar to this?
Yep.
It's the same program.
It's the same program.
Last year, we had trouble getting the kids.
Yeah, we had trouble getting the kids. We didn't have enough because.
Right.
We used to get like six or, or eight, but last year, we just had.
Well, just, just us trying to hire kids was tough. I know we only had one or two that came to Box and Rec. And then four or five went to the high school and worked with Ken Townsend. So it was, I know he was having trouble hiring, but I think this is a little different. They have a group where they set it up, and then they can set up like with Dave's group or say Laurie with the summer camp, but wherever, and say, hey, we got five kids that we can have scheduled.
Summer recreational summer program.
And, and I'm hoping that we'll have, we'll have more students interested this year because we'll be recruiting from their own community.
Right.
So it's not, you know, more investment at home.
Yeah, every year we request six.
Steve, is there a button up there? I just thought you had it up.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Every year we request at least six. Four years ago, we ended up with four. The year before, the year after that was three. Then we didn't get any. Last year, we got two. One kid didn't even make it through the first day. And the second kid didn't come back on the second day.
What did you do though, Dave? What did you do?
All they were doing was working on a bike path.
Duffy was driving him, huh?
They were picking up, they were picking up litter, and they were, they were teaching them how to use a weed whacker. One kid weed whacked for two, two hours and went home.
I don't blame him.
He just left his stuff and went home. So I mean, we request it every year. Good. That made them, that made them think twice about going back to school.
But I definitely wanna, we definitely wanna try it again, you know, if we put in a request for at least six more.
Okay.
If we can get them, you know what I mean, so.
Did that kid end up suing you?
No, no.
He left the weed whacker.
I was a kid who was looking for your mom.
That's right. That's a good boy. That's the good stuff, so.
I mean, obviously, every part of, part of why we exist is because there is a population in this state that doesn't have the skillset yet to be gainfully employed. And ultimately, that's our goal. Start off small, small, with summer employment, with a work experience so that we take, we take that financial pressure off of communities and off of businesses. And it really frees people up to give some of these youth an opportunity that they may not have had otherwise. And some don't work out, but some really do. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming, Sarah.
Can I leave these somewhere?
Yes, you can just leave them right on the table. We don't, sorry.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Minutes of previous meeting resolved at the minutes of the February 7th, 2017 town council meeting. Minutes are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution. Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda. License applications resolved at the consent agenda. Having been posted all matters being referred to the proper departments and being disposed of the waiting recommendation, the same as hereby approved.
Move the resolution. Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Those licenses have just been approved. There's CrossFit Banana, South County Stonemasons, Perfect Nails, Perfect Nails, Art Cloud Events, Church of Sacred Heart, Ocean State Volleyball, and they've all been approved.
Consent agenda correspondence resolved at the consent agenda, having been posted all matters being referred to the proper departments are being disposed awaiting recommendation the same as hereby approved.
Move the resolution. Second the resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? There's a few in here. Lieutenant Governor Danny McKee is reaching out to all cities and towns. If you get a chance to read that, if you haven't read it already. The Town of Charleston's reaching out to all cities to support resolution of Gina Raimondo's Rhode Island Promise Program. Just make sure you read those if you get a chance. Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Additions of taxes resolved at the attached additions in the amount of $2,515.10 presented to the tax assessor for approval of the town council in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Code of Honor is hereby approved.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this. I have a very distant relative in this tax abatement.
It's actually a plus. It's additional taxes. It's actually a good news thing, not a bad news.
Is it a plus?
Yeah.
You just seen the name, so I don't have to recuse myself.
It's not cancellation.
Okay. I move the resolution. Second the resolution. I just caught the niggamie to say.
No, I'm saying it's a good thing. It's not a cut, you know. I got a second discussion. Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We're just not used to seeing addition of taxes. Always see.
No, it's my fault. I looked. I seen a little abatement there. I said, oh.
Town council acting as a liquor commission. Korea versus Tower Foods, West Valley Inn. Licensed transactions subject pending receivership.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to finish reading it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolved that the attached alcohol beverage license renewal have been advertised in accordance with the law for hearing on this date. No remistrats or objectives present. The same is hereby approved. Alcohol beverage license is extended for 90 days. After 90 days, renewal is needed.
I'll move the resolution for discussion. I'll second the resolution.
Discussion.
Dave, Fred, I mean, we have a receiver, which I don't think is a good friend of the town of West Warwick's. And we're extending a license for him to try and move this piece of property when we all know he'll move it to anyone, whether it's nonprofit, whatever, and cost us over 30, $40,000 a year. Myself, I'm not for extending this license for the reason because if someone decides to buy that piece of property, I don't think that this council will have a problem in reissuing a liquor license to them. But to make it easier for Mr. Land, I'm not in favor of that. So I leave it to my federal councilman. It's in my district. But overall, the town is gonna suffer because he has no care at all in what goes in that place. All it is for him is to make a sale and give it to anyone who will take it.
I don't disagree with that whatsoever, Angelo, because I've had numerous phone calls of parties that are interested in the building.
Yeah.
And in parties that are interested in not seeing what they want to put in there already. And there's no bones about it. They want to put a church in the front building, which will become tax-free. I've actually looked into possibly taxing churches of anybody who becomes a church after January 1, 2017, to prevent that from happening.
And I'm with you.
Because it's something I've been looking at. I've gone to our state legislators. I've talked to some of the Satchel. I don't want to tax all churches. And I want to make that clear right now. But as of January 1, 2017, if you become a church in the town of West Warwick, you should be taxed. Because me personally, that building and that property is not designed to be a church. Whatever it may be designed for is beyond me, but it definitely, like Angelo said.
He wants the best of both worlds.
You know, to take away 30, $40,000, $50,000 a year in taxes from the town of West Warwick to make it a church, I, I'm just not for it at this point. And it's not because I'm anti-church or anything like that. It's because that's revenue that we have to make up somewhere else along the line.
David, is it an existing church that wants to move, or is it a brand-new?
Brand-new. They want to bring it into West Warwick.
Okay. So, so if we deny the renewal, that's not to say that if another business goes into that location that we can't.
Let's put it this way. If, if.
We, we call a shot.
If All Stars wants to buy Coles, West Valley Inn, okay, I can tell you right now that I don't think this council or any council that's ever been up here would deny them a liquor license. So to continue this liquor license there and nothing's going on down there is.
Doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense.
Can I, can I just bring one issue to the council's attention?
You're gonna be a Debbie Donner tonight, aren't you?
No, no, not at all.
Into the microphone, sir.
Thank you. The original reason why this request was made by the receiver was given the fact of the current use when they went into the receivership. That's it in a nutshell, because it was a banquet facility with an alcohol license. They wanted to keep that in order to make the property, especially in the back, the Triple Crown Room, more attractive to a potential buyer. That's it. As to what type of developers, or what type of applicants, or what type of people have shown interest, you guys are right. It doesn't make a difference. You guys can always reenact the existing liquor license to a new group. However, in order to market it, and remember, these receivers, we've been dealing with Mr. Dorsey on other matters, they're not marketing just to Rhode Island or New England. They're going outside. And we've all reached a really, I mean, an agreement that the banquet business, the restaurant business, the bar business, whatever you want to call it, is really difficult to get into now. So if in fact, he has the additional attraction of having the license there at the outside shot, he gets a banquet facility or somebody there, it makes it more attractive to people looking at it. That's it in a nutshell. That's why originally, we put them on these 90-day.
Let me, let me ask a question.
This is Providence where liquor licenses are almost impossible to get.
Let me, let me ask one question. The taxes are still registering up.
Yes.
Yes. So maybe someday, we might be fortunate enough, instead of letting a nonprofit go in there, that the town, there'd be so much money in taxes, that we'll own it outright and can do what we want with it and not go through Mr. Land. So that is my, I'm not gonna make it as easy, and I say it right out in public. I'm not gonna make it as easy as what he thinks we're gonna make it. Because I think he's trying to prostitute this town. I particularly don't like the way he goes about talking to people who called and, like David said, interested in the properties. I, I have had a couple of calls, and I know Fred had, had a couple of calls also. And I'm just not gonna bow down. Like we said, we can always approve a liquor license for the people that we want to run the club, or whatever it may be. So I'm, again, I'm gonna be voting against this.
And that facility, that can be split, right?
Yes. It's already been split.
Yeah, right.
Actually, it's got, the two different buildings are already split. But I just want to bring to the council attention that normally, in these types of situations, only because of what the use was when the owners put it into receivership. Now, the receivership is governed by what the Superior Court judge allows the court-appointed receiver to do and what not to do. So in the event the council does not approve this 90-day extension on the liquor license, don't be surprised if the receiver goes to Superior Court seeking the same relief from a court, from the judge. Well, and again, one of the reasons why we approved this license to move on was, you know, we had people from Newport, Providence, that were looking at keeping this facility as a banquet facility.
Right.
And so we said that. But now.
You've already renewed it at least twice.
They're not gonna need a liquor license unless they, the churches get liquor licenses if they want.
It's not, it's not, it's not really the liquor license aspect for the church.
No, I know.
And again, just so you know, it's clear.
To me, it's not marketing for.
That church issue is at a very preliminary stage as far as the town's concerned with zoning and planning.
But again, the, the interested parties that have come to me, who are interested and have gone to Frag, have gone down there and looked at it and said, I'm very interested in this property, but if that front building's a church, I'm no longer interested.
But this, I don't, I don't mean to belabor the point. That issue is apples and oranges as what they're trying to do regarding the receivership and the, the presentation of the property, which really includes the back Triple Crown Room because that's where they had the huge kitchen, and that's the selling point. So the only issue for the town on the liquor license is whether or not they want to grant another 90-day extension for the possible development of the back, which would be called the Triple Crown Room. The issue for the front building is still very much in the preliminary stages. If that falls by the wayside with zoning and planning, then the develop, excuse me, the receiver will be back to step one. So I mean, again, I have no stake in this. I don't care whether you approve it or not. It's just that I'm explaining to you why the receiver normally gets the consideration of the liquor license. It's only because of the use.
So the church is on the docket now for the zoning meeting. Question to you, Tim and Paula brought up this question, and it's a good one. If the church were to get approved for that use, and the council does not approve this liquor license extension tonight, does that mean the use goes away? And if someone new comes into the back building and says, we want a liquor license, are they now too close to a church to be granted one because they're no longer grandfathered?
That's a thousand feet, right?
Yep.
Well, let me ask you this question. Are we taking Giorgio Drive as a paper street? Because that'll come into the calculations of a thousand feet.
That's what it is, a paper street, right?
Well, you've got, you've got Petracca.
Building the building's at a thousand feet.
Giorgio. No, we've got some, we've got some questions about the entire lot down there. If, if I may for the council, if the council approves this tonight, it's really not gonna change anything that happens regarding people coming to you about what they may want to put there. If you don't approve it tonight, it's not gonna change people that are coming to you to develop the property. It's really not.
So going back to what I said about taxing churches.
That's not on the agenda tonight. I want to address that one right now.
It'll be on the next agenda.
Yeah, put it on there. All right, let's vote on, let's vote on this.
All, all places.
If you establish after January 1, 2017, yes, I agree with that.
Any house abortion.
Right.
Correct.
So the House of Weed from what square inch you're not gonna approve?
The House of Williamson is getting denied.
Damn, damn it. All right. But the point is, like I said.
St. Angelo's church is not getting approved either. I want to be a minister.
St. Angelo's of the Ascension.
Just go online. You can get your ministry.
All right.
I know. It's 50 bucks.
20 bucks.
50. You found a bit cheaper place.
So it's moved in second. Any other discussion?
So let me ask a quick question. So this is just an extension for 90 days. Because I do feel concerned if, if.
No, I, I.
If we create a situation where the, the back building cannot get licensing.
No, it's not gonna make a difference. Solicitor said it won't make a difference.
No, no, he, no, no, no.
If you don't extend it, if you don't extend it tonight, I'm not sure that that automatically distinguishes, excuse me, extinguishes the use from the front building to the back.
Maybe we should approve it and wait 90, and then in 90 days, when it comes back, we can look at it further.
You know what I do? I table this. I'm gonna make a motion to table it. This way here, there's no action taken until we know what's going on.
It's gonna expire this month.
It expires.
Then we can always renew it. But if it expires, do we fall into the.
If it expires, it's no longer a license there. Nobody renewed it. So for instance.
Even if we table to further?
I'll use Phoenix Hotel as an example. He hasn't had a bar there in five years, but they renew the license every year.
But if we, Tim, if we, if we table this, we're not denying it, and we're not approving it. So therefore, it wouldn't expire because we're with.
It expires March 31st.
It would expire March 31st if no action's taken. Even with their letter asking for relief, if that's not acted upon, the original license will still expire as of March 31st. My suggestion would be simply this. If you don't want to go 90 days, and you want to get a, a decision or a legal opinion as it relates to what Paula's question is, grant it for 30 days, and that gives you guys a little bit more room to work with.
I would go for that.
You can make, you can make an amendment to amend it from 90 to 30.
I'll make, I'll make the amendment. Instead of 90 days, I would move it to 30 days.
Pending.
Pending, uh, uh.
Well, I was, pending two issues. Number one, pending if there is actually a sale that could possibly happen. But that would go before the Superior Court, and the council would know about it. But the second issue would be is to have an opinion as it relates to if the.
The church.
If the liquor license expires, what happens in the result? A new liquor license is applied for, given that thousand-foot rule of the church. Is that basically it?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you amend it, it'll be an oral amendment from 90 to 30 days, and then you exhume it.
All right. I made the amendment from 90 to 30.
Second.
Under those conditions.
Moving second. Any other discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
And now you have to vote on it, right, because you just amended it?
Yes. Um any other discussion on the original matter? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Bid award for writing industrial floor scrubber for the Westwork Civic Center.
Oh, Town Council acting as Town Council, I'm sorry.
There's nothing here, no.
No. Yeah, but now we're gonna move this resolution when she reads it. Just read that.
Result that the Town Council hereby approves the bid award for the writing industrial floor scrubber to NICO Industrial Cleaning Equipment Commercial Products.
Move the, move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
Moving second. Discussion?
How many?
Laurie?
What do we have, one, two?
Hi.
Hi, Laurie.
How are you? Um, we put out a bid for a writing floor scrubber, which is desperately needed for up there. Um, there was two bids that came back, we did look at the NPR and that was much higher, so I looked over. I've learned lots of things about floor scrubbers with the amount of people that called me. Um I could win a trivia contest at this point on a floor scrubber. Um, I read them multiple times. The bid came out that I feel that we should go with is the NICO, NICO, something like that.
NICO?
Yep.
The one for eighty-five?
The eighty-five, um he's going to come, he's gonna give like a whole lesson of how this machine works, whatnot. Um he's also giving us a fifty-five gallon drum of low foam soap, which is what is needed for that floor, because there was never a, something put over it that, yeah, there's so much stuff that I've learned.
That's a five hundred dollar value also.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, it's, the, the two machines that the bids came in for are very comparable to each other, I mean, this is just great. There is another machine that was a walk behind and they're actually taking that and they're using that for a thousand dollars. So, the original bid was ninety-five hundred, but, you know, they're gonna take that, which is great, because now that's gone and now I have a place to put this newer.
And the one that you're advising us to go with, which I will agree with you, was from Mass and the other guy's from Minnesota, Minneapolis, Minneapolis.
I will mention too that Ken Townsend also assisted in putting the bid specs together and reviewing them as well, so he's had a chance to review these.
Any other questions for Laurie? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you, Laurie.
Thank you.
Are you gonna write, are you gonna write it around?
No, we got, Bert, Bert wants to be the driver.
Absolutely.
We'll let him wear his badge, his six shooter, he can drive all the way through the Civic Center.
Can we put a plow on it?
We can have attachments, right, Bert?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash seven, second reading, an ordinance amending Appendix C, traffic ordinances of the Court of Ordinances of the Town of Westwark.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, again, this is in my ward. Um, this is a no parking sign at the corner of Sisson and Douglas, is that the one I'm reading here? I'm just trying to go real quick. Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Um, so, faster the better. I get a lot of complaints on parking on Douglas and Sisson. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jason? John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash eight, as amended, second reading, sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico, an ordinance amending Chapter Four, Animals and Fowl, Article Two, Animal Control of the Court of Ordinances of the Town of Westwark.
Move the ordinance.
The rooster ordinance.
I'll second.
She's yours, you better second it.
Listen to Jay, I'm listening to Jason. Uh, so just to recap, this is focused on ambient temperature, um to be sure that dogs specifically are not out in temperatures that are either too hot or too cold for any extended period of time, so fines will be levied.
Your neighbor Jacoby.
Wanna remind everybody that roosters are strictly prohibited.
Roosters will be prohibited.
I li- I like the wording strictly prohibited, that's how we tighten that up.
Strictly enforced.
Strictly enforced.
All right, any other comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, roll call vote, Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter Seven, Article Two, Fire Prevention Section seventeen, I mean, seven dash sixteen, State Code adopted of the Court of Ordinances of the Town of Westwark.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Appointments and reappointments, appointment to Town Moderator, resolve that the Town Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as the Town Moderator, John Bernero.
I'll move the resolution in the name of John, oh, yeah, well, you brought up the name, but I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
I'll move the name of John Bernero, seeing that he only wanted to do it for one year.
You wanna say, you wanna do it one time, one time only?
That was what, ten years ago, Fred?
He's like Bernie.
Yeah, same thing. Oh, Bernie's now, you just can't get rid of him. One foot in the door, one foot out.
Uh John does a great job, um, at what he does here for us, so I don't have a problem with that.
So, this is, this is basically when he moderates for the budget?
Yes, so he'll be up there and he'll moderate and if there's any ru- unruly members in the crowd, he handles that for us, so. And then the Town Sergeant does too. So, uh, with the assistance of the Westwork Police Department. Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Appointment for Board of Canvases and Registration, resolve that the Town Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member for the Board of Canvases and Registration for the Town of Westwark with the term to expire on April of twenty twenty-three.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second the resolution.
Moving second, discussion?
Yes, I moved the name of Raymond Lambert. His name was put in for the last four weeks, there was no other name submitted until six twenty-eight tonight. Um, and I'm not even gonna acknowledge this letter, because by my resolution when I was president, that we passed, me and you, is you had three weeks to advertise the name, everyone knows when the appointments are due, when they're up, and um, I have no other comment, I moved the name of Ray Lambert.
I'll second that.
Moving second, discussion? Just state your name for the record.
Felix Apollonia. Um, the Assistant Town Clerk contacted me, contacted me on the eighth. Bottom line is, I wasn't aware that Ray wanted to be reappointed, he probably did, but had, had he asked me and I put it, if I put his name on a list with three people, obviously he's got the votes, so whether there's one name or three names, to be honest with you, there's a few people in the public that over the last two years have expressed an interest in going on the Board of Canvases, and I'm sure you hear from some of them. So, I just thought, you know, if they're interested, I should submit the, the name, which we won't. So, we'll go on the basis that Ray did talk to me, he is interested, I have nothing in writing, I've submitted nothing in writing, but at some point, there are people in the public that are your constituents that do wanna go on. So, we'll let it go and make the appointment. But I, uh, but I did hear on the eighth, I was, I, I, you may have been aware of this four weeks before, I, I did not know until March eighth. And it, it's not a lot of time to get back to people. It doesn't matter, if there's three or four people on the list and Ray has the votes, then it's a technicality and I respect that.
With, with that being said, Felix, I've had some conversation with Ray, I've attended his meetings, um, for the most part, he's been very professional and cordial. He knows the laws. Um, have we agreed on everything? Absolutely not, I mean, we've had discussions on that also.
I don't think every, I don't think everyone agrees on everything.
No, and he run, he runs a gr- a, a very good meeting, professional meeting. I think he has control of the Board of Canvases, where if he left today, um, others would be lost without him.
David, it's only about other people that are interested, how to handle requests from other people, that's all it is. You're gonna run, you're gonna find people from time to time wanna go on some boards. I mean, they, they do, they've asked in the past, it's not gonna happen now. So, let's say Ray's name was on a list with four people, he has the votes anyway, so it's a technicality. It's just a matter of, when Angelo made the appointment six years ago and it didn't go through the chair, you have to follow the procedure because of the law. So, in this case, I'll acknowledge it, he talked to me, I have no problem with it and it is what it is, but at some point, other people are interested.
Well, then they should, when, when we advertise these, which are advertised for a month at a time.
You're right.
It's not our problem to go see them, that's your problem, because you're the chair of the Democratic Committee.
That's right.
You should be on top of this, telling your constituents and your members that there's openings.
Angelo, a lot of times, a lot of times they communicate with the, with the council, they feel, they don't understand the chair, they're supposed to submit names.
The people that you wanna bring their names on, they're not interested, and if they were, they didn't even give us a letter of interest. We don't have any letter from them, two or three people, they're not interested.
They're supposed to submit it through me.
They didn't submit it, they didn't submit it. If you said they go through the council, but you said they go through the council, so why didn't they submit it to the council?
I couldn't get it in by the fifteenth, I didn't get an answer by the fifteenth. So, from March eighth to the fifteenth, I didn't get an answer and it was about five days, that's when I knew about it.
So, I'm gonna follow the law a little, a little better, it's because you didn't submit a name. I'm gonna have to actually make a motion if, if you read the law.
Well, if you, if you feel five days is enough notice for me to ha- to contact people, plus I didn't even know Ray wanted to be reappointed. Had he said he wanted to be reappointed, I would've submitted his name, so I would've submitted one name or two or three. The fact of the matter is.
Well, the law is you're gonna submit five, not three, not two.
Somebody told me three.
You gotta do all five, by law.
Bert? I just need you to come up to the mic, Bert.
Bert Malahan, Monterey Drive, West Warwick. Uh, Mr. President, in, I've been on the Canvas Board since ninety-eight and Al Manning appointed me to, to the board and then the council voted me in. And I've been through one, two, three, four chairman. And believe me, Ray took us out of a very difficult time this year, a very difficult time, probably the most difficult time of all the time that I've been on the board. And he's an excellent chairman and people that are on the board right now, we work very, very well with that guy. And you, you couldn't have a better choice, and, and thank God he's willing to serve.
Thank you, Bert.
Thanks, Bert.
Joe?
Uh, Joe Florio Junior, Chairman of the Westwark Republican Town Committee. Um, I'd like to put in a good word for Raymond, Raymond's done an excellent job, every, all the meetings that I've been to, he's always done a fair job and, and going right by the rules and handled himself very well. And I just think he should be reappointed.
Thank you, Joe.
I, I had dealt with Ray a little bit, you guys may remember the interesting election we had. Um, and, uh, you know, I think Ray was fair with me, every time I talked to him, I didn't always like everything that was going on, but in the end, I think Ray was pretty fair with me, so, it's my two cents.
I was there, he was fair, it, the Board of Canvases has gone better, it's just a matter of the procedure, it's a simple technicality, that's all it is. Nothing more, don't read into it, okay?
Thank you, Felix.
Thank you.
Um, with that being said, I move the name of Ray Lambert. Well, second. Moving second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, Ray, thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Discussion, action, coffee with the councilman.
Uh, so this was, um, this was on the agenda previously, um, before we're all having a couns- uh, coffee with the constituents, myself and Senator Satchel, Rep. Nunes, and also Ward Three Town Council, um, School Councilman Louis Cologne, uh, this Thursday, for anybody that's interested. But I'm also interested in having a co- coffee with the councilmen, similar to like the coffee with the police officers type meetings. I wanted to bring it to the council first to make sure that we followed all the proper steps for giving public notice without breaking any open meetings law, so if you gentlemen are interested, uh, maybe we could set up a date.
If I could just make a simple point about.
Sure.
Open meetings and rolling quorums. If either one, if an individual councilperson has a meeting and the other four want to go, you can't put yourself in the table in the corner while sitting there, you can be discussing the Red Sox, people are gonna be thinking you're discussing dumb business and you're gonna have to defend your position. So, you can take questions from people that are there, but you can't act in concert with each other, okay? So, if somebody has a question about garbage pickup, that's fine, if two of you, now there's three of you all together, are talking about garbage pickup, you possibly could face a problem.
Even, even, even advertising it ahead of time with something like this.
If you're advertising it ahead of time, it's gonna be a council meeting.
Well, there's, there's, there is a way around it, um, Jay, so if you do a council meeting, schedule that, say, the senior center from six to ten or six to eight, and it's coffee with the councilmen or, or council people.
That's different.
Then you advertise that and anybody can come for anyone.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'll tell you what, it's worked, I think, with Coffee with the Cops.
Yeah.
Or policemen, however, I forgot how chief worded it last time.
Coffee with the cops is the way they were.
And, and I, and I think it worked out well, you know, especially at the senior center and, so I, I don't have a problem with it, we just have to, you know.
Yeah, which is why I brought, which is the reason that, that we had the, the meeting we're having this Thursday, we did it that particular way and why I wanted to bring it to the council first before we did something like that.
I think if you do two hairs, you serve coffee outside, we can have it on Tuesday night right here.
The only issue is if it's, if it's, if it's coffee with the Town Council, all right, then you're gonna have, it's gonna become an open meeting.
Right. It's gonna be advertised and recorded.
Right, if it's coffee with a councilman, any one of the individuals.
You know, first of all, I don't even think it's a, I didn't know when people were calling me and said, how come you guys weren't coming? It was a misunderstanding, you didn't say it was a ward.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
Coffee with a ward, so, I mean, I know when I meet with my constituents, like I said, I probably have more people at my trailer in the morning than we have here at a council meeting every day. So, I meet with my constituents and I don't have to advertise to the Ward Two, Three, Four, Five that, uh, I'm gonna have it, and same thing with Ward Three or Four or whatever it is. But, I mean, it's a great thing, Jay, I mean, you're new to it, so you should get your face out there along with Jason and John. I mean, but like me and David, we know, we're accessible every day, we know where we are, and to take a vote on this, I mean, there's nothing to take a vote on.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't even, it was just fun to perform our status.
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, all it was, was a misunderstanding. It, and like Timmy said, any, all of us can go there, as long as we're talking about baseball and football and we're not making any decisions, oh, we're gonna vote on this, we're gonna vote on that. It's a question and answer thing, which.
Correct.
Has nothing to do with violating open meetings law. So, but it's a good thing and I, my hat goes off to you for putting this on.
Because in, in the event a particular issue comes up that everybody says, hey, you know something, that's a good idea, the only way you address it is that we will put that on the council agenda, so the council can address it ahead of Town Council and then invite the people that wanna be there, invite, Bert?
Bert Malahan, uh, Monterey Drive. You know, I can remember four or five years ago, uh, I would attend a meeting, uh, of just Ward Four with the councilman there and they had a good turnout, and that way you get feedback from the people that, that live in that ward. And I also, because I'm in Ward Four also, and by just having the people in that ward there, right, uh, I think you get better feedback than anything that I can think of, and we had good crowds. And that was Ward Four and Five, and that was no more than, you know, four or five years ago. And I, I, I think what they did is, uh, that, uh, they bought, brought the town manager with them and that was it. It was just the councilman and the town manager. And they answered just about any question that any constituent wanted to know or he'd be blown off steam if he wanted to.
We had that in Ward One about seven, eight years ago.
Yeah, it's a good idea to do that.
Yeah, we've done, we've done, I think we've all done something in the past, like meet the candidate or whoever it may be. It's just, you know, Jay wanted to let us know what he was doing.
Well, this other one came together pretty quickly, uh, the one with Rep. Nunes and Adam and Louis, so it kinda came quickly and as soon as it did, I'm like, we should really try to at least discuss this, but, you know.
Well, you, you could even invite, uh, Mr. Williamson, his. You, you could even invite, uh, Mr. Williamson, as long as he doesn't turn out any ch- any, any check. Bert, Bert, don't listen to him. You're the town sergeant. He ju- he's just a solicitor.
And to piggy, to piggyback on that-
Bert, I got access to free booze through the General Assembly.
I heard they lost all them liquor cabinets when you left.
Do I have to say my name again? Joe Florio?
Joe, hang on one second. To piggyback on that for Ward Four.
You're gonna make the guy hold his tank.
One second. Um, it's, I know Joe, it's okay. Um, to, to piggyback on that, um-
Joe, stand up.
That is the plan in Ward Four. Um, I actually plan on walking the ward again, because being a new councilman, I, I believe that face-to-face contact, and I haven't had that with everybody. Um, but it's not gonna be until, for me to walk the ward again, it's gonna be when it gets a little bit warmer. So, I'm looking at, at May, May, possibly June. We have a, a lot of events coming up, townwide. So, which could, I wanna try and get through some of those first.
It's the same thing with Ward Two.
How would you get that information out to, uh, say, the provisions over?
We knock on the doors and whatever else.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk, I'm gonna walk it. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have a fl- just like when you ran for election, it's gonna be the same thing, door to door.
Food and books.
You know, businesses, um, it's, it's, it's a big ward.
It's, it's, it's also my attention, but it's, it's time consuming.
Joe, guys, guys, hold on. Let Joe go, please.
Um, I guess, I, I'm sorry. I think it's a good idea, and, uh, I think the last two times I was down at Angelo's trailer, he didn't have any coffee. I think you oughta have more coffee.
Well, you know, if the Republicans are trying to be so stingy, we could get a couple of bucks and do it.
Um, it's the same thing, uh, Ward Two. I have two major developments coming up on Main Street. I'm gonna get with the town manager, Mark Carrulo, and we're gonna have a meeting with those two, uh, Flynn Terrace, Woodside Avenue, Maple Avenue area, and, and same thing, just to let them know what's going on over there, so that they're not, uh, shell shocked, or whatever, when they see a building come down and a building go up.
They're gonna be happy.
Um, huh?
Be happy with that.
Well, I'm trying to work, we're trying to work out the red light situation too, so if we get that squared away, I think of Maple Ave, very happy.
Are we in charge of that light? That's not our light, is it?
No, but if they put the development, they might have to put the left hand.
The li- the li- the old Domino's?
Fix the left-hand turn.
Yeah, but in other words, that, is that state for me? Yeah.
Yeah, that's awful.
That is state. Okay. Uh, thank you, Jay. Town managers report.
Just a few items. Um, I would like to, um, schedule an exec session for the next meeting, if that's okay. A couple of issues I wanna go over, the, um, wage reopener discussions that have been going on with the unions, um, to this point, and also, um, some additional personnel-related matters to discuss with you. And finally, um, based upon the discussion we just had with, uh, regard to the West Valley property, as the council is probably aware, we, we did, uh, bring on, um, John Dorsey to act on our behalf during this receivership, so we have somebody on the inside lobbying for us, um, all the good it's been doing. But, um, he's, um, offered to update you on some of the offers that are out there, and what's going on. So, um, I think, uh, Tim, that qualifies for exec session, considering. So, um, we-
Six o'clock, it sounds like.
Yeah.
As, as of that West Valley in, I, I, maybe, is Rose here?
Yeah.
How much money is owed on, I know it's like thirty-five thousand a year. How much is owed on that with the back taxes and everything? Do you know off the top of your head?
Rose, you can't yell from the back.
No, it's alright. If she don't know, don't let her know.
She asked me if, if that was gonna be needed tonight, and I told her I didn't think so, because we were just talking about the liquor license, so that's my fault.
Can you call me tomorrow, please, with some figures on that, because what I-
Actually, just email the council.
What I'm on, yeah, what I'm, um, getting is all different stories, um, the Senateable Bank holds the note-
They do.
That they foreclosed for six hundred thousand. And the property, the whole deal was for sale for six hundred. Then I'm getting some other information that it's seven fifty.
Well, that's why he, he, he'll, he'll be able to clear all this up for you.
It's a million and two, yeah. I mean, you know, so I wanna-
And plus, the other thing is, he filed on our behalf that any portion of that that's sold, so if that front piece is sold and not the back piece, we'll get all of our taxes back with that first sale. So that's something that's already been entered into the court as part of the receivership.
But that isn't, that property, that's of, almost fourteen acres, that's not split in half or anything. That's still one-
No, it's, it is split.
Did Bobby split that?
Yeah.
When they, when they went into that?
Yep, they're separate lots, yeah. So that front building is on a separate lot, and it's actually separated by, it was always a separate lot, because it's actually separated by a road, believe it or not, that's not really a road.
Georgio Drive.
Yeah, but it is, it's listed on, on our parcel maps as a, as a street, so, um, which is another discussion we're having as part of this whole process.
None of the parcel maps has a, a name differently.
Yeah, it's named a couple of things, yeah.
Georgio Drive is coming in off Providence Street and stopping at the turn.
Right.
And then the straightaway is named something else.
Just like Monticle is actually La Grande to Monticle, but it's Monticle.
Yeah. Because Petracca comes that way, Georgio comes that way, and that other stretch, like you said, the long stretch, there was another name to that. But they just took the sign down.
But the long stretch is interesting because of the building is actually in the long stretch.
Yeah, it actually goes into this right-of-way. And the stairs are completely in the right-of-way, so, yeah, it's, it's an interesting-
So that's why, that's why we're getting inundated with offers.
Yeah, so these are all issues that have to be addressed on that building. So i- i- I just think it'd be worthwhile to let, um, John Dorsey bring everybody up to speed on-
Done with the good old days.
What's going on? The other issue I wanted to bring up is, um, I, I sent out an email to the council, a couple emails today regarding an event at the Civic Center, which is April seventh. Uh, it's Friday evening.
Thanks, Rose.
And it's from, uh, seven to eleven. There's, how many shows? Three? Three different shows. There's, there's a circus, um, that is, that has booked the Civic Center. Um, you know, they, they provided all their insurance documents, all their state permit documents, everything is approved. All we're doing is renting the facility. Um, we've since been getting, um, emails from PETA, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, um, asking us to not let them come. Or make, if they do come, not letting them have animals. Um, so I just wanted to make the council aware that that was a request.
So the council can't come, then you're saying to them?
Uh, but-
You can't have a circus without animals.
You know, and like, like I emailed the council, and I said, you know, you're hearing, this one's saying this, this one's saying that, they're mistreating the animals, they're not mistreating the animals. You got, each of, like, you hit it right on the head. You said, they're both pointing their fingers at each other. If they were mistreating the animals, I'm sure that they would shut that circus down, or whatever they had to do. So I'm not gonna get in the middle of stopping, uh, a venue from coming into town that our kids are looking forward to. And, you know, I mean, enough's enough. So, we need the money. The money's coming in. I don't see any proof that they're mistreating animals, and I'm an animal lover, like everyone else in this room, or everyone else in this town. But enough's enough.
Have you, have you watched any of the videos?
Yeah.
You've called me worse, so.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, I, I was gonna, I was being nice, Dave.
On the record.
But all, all their paperwork's in order, right?
Saturday, Saturday, anywhere.
Everything.
It's no brine. A brining in front of the, uh, puppies.
That's a little, that's a different si- that's a different situation, though. That's a little different situation. Well, I mean, Ringling Brothers doesn't have animals anymore, right?
Well, you know what? They put, they put so much, they put so much heat on them, they're out of business.
Guess what? They shut down. They're out of business.
They shut down. They put, they put hundreds of people out of jobs.
So, let me ask a quick, quick question. Um, so, they're in compliance with the new bullhook law?
They're in compliance with-
The elephants?
As far as we know, they've gotten all the permits and, yeah.
They're gonna, they're gonna be inspected. Usually every week they go, there's inspection unannounced.
Correct.
They wouldn't have it. This is above our pay grade.
Caught with any of that stuff, but they get, uh, they get, obviously, the summers and the five, but they usually, the, the, all of these groups, when they go to, at different places, are always getting checked by local authorities.
Correct, and they're always getting picketed, so there's a lot of scrutiny.
What if they have, what if they have roosters?
What if they have roosters? As long as they don't live here, it's okay. They can visit. Roosters, roosters can visit.
No roosters.
No, they can visit.
Strictly prohibited.
All, all kidding aside, um-
Did you hear that, Tommy? No roosters.
I, I'm wel- I'm willing to give it a shot and take a look at it. Um, I'll probably go up there and-
Yeah, I'll be there.
Take a visit. Um, personally-
I'll be petting the animals.
Again, I understand both sides of it. People, you know, same thing with dogs and, you know, all animals, people have both sides where, um, there's two sides to every story. I did watch one or two of the videos. I didn't get a chance to really sit there and watch everything. Um, you know, I know Bonner and Bailey did get a, a bad reputation for the way they treated their animals and their elephants. Unfortunately, uh, they ended up having to get rid of their elephant shows, and again, no longer here. Um, you know, our kids and other kids, generations have always, I know personally, and I was always excited to go to the circus. You know, my kids were always excited to go, and I want their kids to be excited to go. I hate to see a kid never be able to go to a circus, because we're not allowed to have animals either. But again, I want them to be treated right also. I mean, you shouldn't be broad or whatever else. I, I wanna make that clear, so. But we'll give, we'll give it a shot and see how it goes. Um, I will say, from the sounds of it, there may be picketers out there, so we may wanna just, but-
I've already given all the information to the chief, so he has it. He's-
Just to make sure that-
Just, just in case, yeah.
There's no headaches or, that's all I have. Thank you.
The executive session's six o'clock?
Wait, it's gonna take an hour, yeah?
Yeah, just the, uh, just West Valley in's gonna, probably take a half hour.
Well, when's that? Uh, first of the month?
The fourth, I think, yeah.
Yeah, no. First meeting of the month, yes. Just send out that to-
Fred, um, I do have something I wanna bring to your attention that was brought to my attention through Coventry, and um, I've been really looking into the building. Harris Fire Station. Um, Coventry's, half that building's in West Warwick, half of it's in Coventry. Um, Coventry's looking at selling, Coventry Fire District's looking at selling that building. After, I, I've, I've visited, um, our fire station in the Wakefield Street a couple of times, um, personally. Once was for business, once was for town council, and, um, touring that little facility, it's, it's, it's not adequate for the, for the employees. And I've always said, if there's always an option to, and there's never really an option for them to move out of there. And, um, what Coventry, I'm not sure what they're looking for yet. The, the asking price is somewhere around two fifty or three hundred thousand dollars for that building, but that's just to be, I, that's just preliminary. I don't know anything about it. I know I, uh, had chief look into our building. Right now, it's valued at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, personally, I, I'd like you to start researching with Coventry and see what the options are for purchasing that building. There's a few different reasons. Um, our equipment that we purchase now, we always have to worry about the size. The si- the box size of the ambulance, the bumper, front bumper of the fire depo- uh, the fire trucks. Um, if we get a new ladder truck, the old ladder truck would fit down there, it would not fit in Phoenix uh, right now. Um, living quarters is, you know, much better. Um, I just think that this is an opportunity that we, we should take. And there's op- and my, and, and some of the, some of the things that I've thought of, and it's not through tax increase or anything like that, would be taking that money out of the rainy day fund, and when we sell our building, we put whatever remain, that money back into the rainy day fund. So if they, let's just say they want two hundred, we sell our building for one forty, we put the one forty back in, we've only taken out sixty thousand. But I, I'm really looking at possibly trying to move us down there. Not only that, it also gives the amenities for the firefighters. As you know, um, end of Wakefield Street, we're pulling out of a red light all the time. Um, they have Cumberland Farms across the street, Bill's Pizza next to them, Harris Bar and Grill further down the road, so they eat, sleep, work, and everything's right there for them. They're not dry, basically, they can walk to these sites, and they don't have to take a fire truck. Like, right now, I know when they go shopping or whatever, they go to Jerry's and take a fire truck there. This, this could help them avoid that also. Um-
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it.
But I, I, I think it's something that we should really look at and consider. And, and if anybody's been in the Phoenix, uh, section, uh, the fire station, really checking out. I, I don't know how the guys actually stay there. I, I wouldn't even wa- I wouldn't wanna stay there, and to be honest with you, but they do it, and they do their job. But again, I think this would be much better for them down in the Phoenix area.
Okay.
Then, I, I don't mind looking into it, but then you got, uh, people and myself saying, why even have the Lipit Fire Department? When you have Natick right there, and they run the schools, you have Arctic.
Well, that's like me saying, why should I have Natick?
No, well, I'm just telling, well, the reason, the reason, the reason why, I'm gonna tell you. Here, here's the difference, when we talked about this before. Natick has the manors, the two churches, right? Lipit, Arctic is right there in there, the manor.
Yep.
Lipit's not, Lipit's not.
What's going in Lipit? Hundred fifty units, right?
Yeah. So you'd have two fire departments that are close that would meet halfway. I'm just, I'm just saying. I don't have a problem looking at-
Well, we still assist, we still assist from Phoenix to Natick. We come over Wakefield Street when we need it.
And Nata comes to over Wakefield Street also.
Um, and the chief, chief's brought up some other things.
But I mean, within a mile, you know, you have two fire depart- three fire departments within two miles. Three fire departments within two miles.
And, and personally, I, I, again, I don't think Lipit's going anywhere. I don't think the Wakefield Street Fire, uh, the end of Wakefield Street Fire Station, if I didn't bring this up, I don't think we'd close down that fire station.
You never know what's gonna happen through, through the years. You never know what's, anything can happen. Anything's in the open.
Again, I don't think we would be shutting that down. I just think we'd give a better scenario down there. It's a much better building, new roof. It's got the bell. I'll be honest with you, it looks like a fire station. I mean, our, it's brick, it's, it's everything that-
Brick, it's red.
It's red. You know, you look, it's not.
It's haunted.
It's, I think it's preliminary, but I, I, I would definitely, it's something I'd like to see. I think it's better for our fire department. Thank you.
It's got the Pokestop right next to it if you decide to play Pokemon.
You can go fishing on the back door.
Batman and Robin's down the street.
Water reports.
Does anybody else have anything for Fred? Thank you, Fred.
Fred, you wanna, do you wanna bring up C Click Fix? An update on that for, for everybody?
I could give a quick one. We, we had our, our kickoff meeting today for C Click Fix. You guys approved that bid last, last, uh, meeting. We did a, uh, we met with, um, uh, the Police Department, Building Department, and DPW. We went over some of the functionality that we're looking at. Uh, they provided an initial, uh, graphic for, for the app, and, um, so then we're gonna, um, we're setting up the next meeting, which will be, uh, to determine what are the issues we wanna highlight for people to, to, uh, enter into that, but I think it's gonna be a very, very powerful tool. And, uh, the departments are starting to get excited about it.
And she said on the phone today, I believe, by the end of, by the middle or end of May, we'll be-
May sixteenth is the target date to bring it live right now. So there's a work with the departments that we need to do, and there's also, they're gonna utilize the, uh, the ward map, so that you'll all get notifications based upon where the complaint comes in. So, if you want them. Um, so we'll have it, we'll have it, so you can turn it on or off. Um, so if it gets to be too much, because you'll get everything, so you'll get the complaint, you'll get the response to the complaint, you'll see the resolution, um, and, uh, we'll just make those automatic to come to you, and if it becomes a problem, you don't want them, you can just jump up on the system and see them anytime you want, but-
Too many questions.
But that way we can, uh, but we're gonna set all that up over the next few months, and May sixteenth is the go-live target date.
Beautiful.
Thanks, Melissa.
Water reports.
Water, five.
So, um, I've been working with neighbors, um, pretty much in the Nottingham area. We have, um, a development that's, um, threatening the area. It's, uh, called Crofton Meadows, and it basically borders Coventry as well as West Warwick. Um, the area has been zoned for about thirty-nine single-family homes, but their intention is to put in a hundred and fifty-six condominiums. Uh, so obviously, the neighbors, especially on Medieval Drive, are up in arms, are upset. Um, a group of us did attend the Coventry Planning Meeting last month. Uh, the planning board at that time tabled the discussion, because uh, no one had reached out to either West Warwick or Coventry, um, unbeknownst to us, you know, it's two days until the meeting, so there was supposed to be a meeting, um, in East Greenwich with the developers, but because of the snowstorm, that was canceled. So apparently, uh, their plan of action in East Greenwich is to, uh, send the information out to the different, um, departments and get information, get feedback back from them, that they will then put in a letter, and they will send out, uh, to the Coventry Planning Board. So, they actually received a letter, um, I guess from the developer. And essentially, there was supposed to be a meeting tomorrow night at the planning board, but it's going to be continued. Uh, so if anyone from that area wants to attend, uh, that will probably, I think the tentative date is April twenty-sixth. So, we have a continuance on that. That's pretty much it for five.
That's it for five?
For right now.
Four?
Okay. Two, two quick things. First of, first of all, uh, thank you, Dave Lombari, for fixing that humongous pothole on Church Street immediately. Um, it, it really stopped a lot of, a lot of complaints. Um, and second, uh, the egg hunt that, uh, Councilman Carrulo and I have been working- and I have been working on, gave about a thousand dollars in, in donation money, um, which, which is excellent, it's, um, it's gonna be called the First Annual West Wallack Easter Extravaganza, um, information's gonna be going out this week, um, the goal, when we were talking, the goal is to not just have an egg hunt, uh, we're gonna have a face painter, caricature artist, uh, Dave Benardi's already been secured, the Easter Bunny will be there, we've reached out to several nonprofit groups, along with the youth sports leagues, uh, the goal actually is, is twofold, to, to align the Civic Center with different nonprofit groups, um, so that when the people come in, they can see exactly what we have to offer, great idea to showcase the summer camp program, um, it's perfect, it's gonna be right, um, I mean, it's a, less than a month away.
Summer recreation, summer program.
Alright, summer recreation, summer program.
He's correct, I know.
But can also be an opportunity for, and, and I'll, Fred, I don't want to put you on the spot, but anything new that we have coming up, like, a, a splash pad is coming, playgrounds are coming, um, just something where the people can ca- can catch their eye to say, hey, you know what, this is what I can take the opportunity to be involved in, it's not just for kids, uh, we have a lot going on, um, any from, from kids to adults, so I think it's, it's gonna be a, I'm, I'm hoping for the best, I'm hoping for four hundred people, but.
Do you have an extra paper?
But maybe my goal is a little, uh, little high, but.
Do you have an extra flyer?
Paul, it might be the Easter Bunny.
No, I heard it was Angelo.
Alls I'm saying, you better treat the Easter Bunny right, or somebody might show up.
That's right.
We're gonna get to sit on his lap?
That's right, the boogeyman.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, three?
Everybody's favorite topic, the Projo Express and Ward Three running rampant, those little orange, little, uh, envelopes or plastic bags, everybody's been, actually, I think it was a hot topic on talk radio as well today, they must follow wonderfully majestic West Wallack, um, I've been trying to look into the issue, the Projo Expresses, for those of you that don't know, there's those free newspapers that just randomly end up piled up really high, or get stuck in your snow blower underneath your bushes, um, I talked a little bit with Solicitor Williamson earlier about the legality of possibly stopping it, I'm not really sure what we could do legally, I'm trying to reach out and speak to some people at the Providence Journal to, of two things, make it easily, if you want to cancel, make it easily able to cancel by give a phone number, and making sure that if you cancel, you stop getting it, because I think the complaint from a lot of people has been that they cancel it and they still keep getting it, and the second thing is, if these delivery boys, men, women, I'm not sure who's delivering them, uh, if they deliver them, if they see like a pile of them, to stop doing it, because it means somebody's not there, somebody's not taking them, don't continue to pile up if you see a few more of them, so I have looked into it, I don't know what we could do as a council, you know, I'm still looking into that, but hopefully, maybe we can remedy it just by speaking to some people at the Projo, so.
I think the best bet is like you're doing, just call the Projo.
Yeah.
Tell them you don't want to take any action, because let's face it, we got enough ordinances now that we can't.
I would agree, I would agree.
We can't follow up on, so, to put an ordinance is gonna be no, no teeth in, in the ordinance at all, and I, I mean, a lot of people I talk to that said it, they enjoy getting it, but where it's an eyesore is, like you said, the abandoned houses, the people that don't own, the banks take over, there's forty of them over there, and that orange just catches everybody's eye in it.
Cause it's, it's a thin paper, so it blows on a windy day, they end up blowing all over the place, it's like we can have the, the Projo Express Easter Egg Hunt.
But they should, there should be a number to call and say, don't drop it off.
There, there is a number, there is a number, but, you know, hopefully, when I speak to somebody, I haven't yet, I'll address the council in a couple of weeks, hopefully, if you cancel, they stop bringing it to you.
Tom, I know you have a, no, you can stay there, I know you have a medical.
They, uh, the circulation place is, I'm going with the names, you know what Cardy's is?
Yes.
That bollabond that goes up into the.
Murphy Highway.
They're right in there, the, the, uh, the circulation place.
So I can collect a bunch of them and bring them all there?
Calling the journal is not going to work, calling them didn't seem to work, addressing the couple that delivered them, the third time I addressed them, I was unkind, and I was embarrassed.
I don't believe that you were unkind.
Not you, Tom.
No, I, I got a little bit upset with them, and not again, or you'll need a windshield, and I have not had one, it cost me a hundred fifty dollars to repair my, my snow blower, and, uh, they're everywhere, but it.
I thought you had to repair the windshield.
Not yet, but no, I mean, they did, they thought I was kidding the first, I mean, waiting out there at four thirty in the morning.
I, I believe that they make their money, they, they get a percentage per, per house they deliver to.
Exactly.
So they don't want to stop.
Exactly, and it's the same couple that do, that do the home delivery of your regular newspaper, too.
Yeah.
In our neighborhood, and where we are, they, uh, deliver somewhere between ten minutes to five and quarter past five.
It's the same paper person that delivers the paper.
Yeah, that's what he's saying, yeah.
I told you that.
Yeah.
It is.
You know, they think that they get so much a paper, it's, it's the ones they get paid, but it's the paper boy or paper girl who comes to your house and, and delivers your paper.
I think we joke, when I was, when I was a kid, I remember the paper boy or paper girl having to deliver it somewhere within, like, a certain area.
Now, it's.
It became like the video game paper boy over the last twenty years.
The journal put a box at the, at the entrance of your property, it was a, a, a box.
Back in, back in the day, yeah.
And the same thing with the, uh, Kent County Times, and they put it in the box.
I can tell you right now, back in my day, I was the paper boy.
Me too.
I had the bag on the front of my bike, I drove to every house, I drove up to the door, I opened up the door, I threw between the door, shut the door.
I'm looking for a real job, maybe I can become a paper boy.
That's not a bad job.
On weekends, you would get your money, Sunday, Friday, whatever.
And I had fortune doing that when I was a kid.
So, Jay, thank you for working on that.
They used to make more in tips, I mean, that's how they, I mean, that's how much you used to make it, right? Tips?
Christmas time was the best.
Nobody's tipping the Projo Express guy.
Anything else in Ward Three besides?
It's at the Projo Express, we got, that's been strictly last two weeks, Projo Express, twenty-four, seven.
You have anything?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, let everybody know, my phone's been going off the hook, because the family members, Johnny Gates won the battle.
He won.
He won?
Or Johnny won?
Johnny won, so that's why my phone's been going crazy, uh, and pretty soon with the Wakefield Street, River Street, they're gonna stop paving any word with, uh, Kent County.
It's getting long, so we'll just go with that. Anything else in Ward One?
No, I'm gonna be quiet on that.
Thank you. Um, Ward Two, um, just a couple of things, Attic redevelopment committee met last Monday, um, they're bringing back an agreement to the council, so that'll be on the next agenda, the April fourth agenda, um, we can go over that, that'll be the first item on the agenda.
I had no attachments attached, I said there's attachments, and I emailed you back.
Um, Mark can get that for you, Mark Carullo, just ask Mark Carullo for everything, um, the other thing, too, uh, I had a little tearjerker over the weekend, where, um, a constituent of mine, um, Land Motors, if, if anybody wants to see some pictures of the car that's been there for years.
Oh.
Um, the, the old Chrysler, um, that was removed this weekend and towed out, he's actually, another Chrysler dealer actually took it and is gonna possibly restore it, but it will not be coming back to Land Motors, but the reason why it was kind of funny to me is my daughter called me and said, Dad, my first car's gone, I always told her that's gonna be your first car, and, because she said she wanted the convertible, and that thing was rotted right off, so I figured that'd be.
Someone can restore that, God bless.
Yeah, and Steve, Steve sent me the pictures, it went away on a trailer, and, uh, he sent me the pictures of how it looked when it left on the trailer, and I also, he sent me the pictures, I think it was there since nine.
What, what year was it?
I can tell you right now.
That was a twenty-something, wasn't it, Dave?
And he told me how many years it was there.
Had no flaws, like the Flintstone car.
Nineteen twenty-six Chrysler, it's been sitting at the dealership since then, so.
Walter Chrysler was here in nineteen twenty-five and gave him that.
So there was, nineteen twenty-six Chrysler, fine, and it's been there since nineteen twenty-six, and it drove out, well, left on a trailer in two thousand seventeen, so, it could have made nine more years, there'd have been a hundred-year-old car sitting in our parking lot, but, um.
I just have one more thing.
And so that, that, that left West Wallack, and that was kind of a, a little piece of Land Motor history there, uh, that's all I really have.
I just have one more thing, just, uh, uh, I lost a good constituent, we lost a good friend in a, we forgot to bring it up at the beginning of the meeting because of the sewer commission, just take a moment, just a thirty seconds, a moment of silence for Dr. Barber, passed away last week, and it was in my district, a good friend of the town, and he delivered probably half of everyone in here.
I was gonna say, the last count that we heard, he delivered over four thousand babies.
Four thousand in the, in the town.
From West Wallack, so.
So, we'll just take a moment of silence.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I forgot myself, Dave.
He's an icon of West Wallack, and even his property.
If I could, anyone who hasn't had the opportunity, you go on the internet, you can look for an interview with Dr. Barber and Coach Monk Mazznicki, they, and I forget who did the interview, but it was like an hour and twenty-minute interview with those two old timers, and all about West Way, I mean, it was fantastic, even my, my kids sat and watched that, they were amazed that we had, uh, Coach Mazznicki, who played for.
Chicago Bears.
The Bears.
Pick up.
NFL players, he was our coach at high school back in our day, back in the dark ages, and.
Well, you're a lot older than me, Tommy, but I, I remember vaguely.
Alrighty, um, upcoming appointments, that list is getting very low, finally.
That's good.
Recreation Committee, Board of Camptuses, which has already been reappointed, Planning Board, alternate member, five-year, Technology Committee, uh, public comment, any public comment, anything from the council? None.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Oh, man.